Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Please remember to silence your phones in favor. First item, do we have any citizen concerns not already on the agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved. Second?
Motion by Radig, second by Taylor to approve today's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
Passes five to zero. Items three through five constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three is approval of the minutes of the October 30, 2018 meeting. Item four is approval of claims. Item five, human resources. A is approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. And B, authorization to initiate hiring process. I will move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Radig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item six is human resources. Authorize chairman to sign the cross-designated employment agreement pursuant to the Midwest High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Program.
Melissa Thomas, Human Resources. We're here to request the chairman to sign the employment agreement with Mr. Patrick Greenwood for the HIDA program. It is U.S.-funded. Questions?
I'll move the approval of the signing.
Second.
Before you go on, I was thinking the date unless it got changed, you said 13th?
Yes.
Can we change that date to today's date? I mean, that won't change anything, but it...
In the agreement itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
The term is the 13th, okay. But today's date is the 6th, which should be the first day on that page.
Okay. You guys got it?
Motion by...
It's gonna change everything, just you're going to today, so it's our system, you're going to 13th from the day.
Oh.
Makes sense.
Motion by Taylor, second by Radig. Do you have any further questions for Melissa on this item? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's in the back of my folder, I think. Okay. County attorney. Approval of tax abatement via redemption for the Crisis Stabilization Center, 4038 Division Street, parcel ending in 001 for 2016 assessment year.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to thank Melissa too. I didn't mean to barge into that, but I just happened to see that and it was just a little odd. But basically, the short version is, is this is property that is owned by three governmental entities pursuant to a 28E agreement under the title of Sioux Rivers. So in essence, this property should be tax exempt. There was a loss in transition from the previous owner, which was the Pride Group, I believe, that was tax exempt. But they were required to fill out the paperwork. Because it's governmental property, there's really no paperwork required. It should be just automatic. There was a lack of communication for better phrasing of what happened here, but by and large, it should have been exempt. It should have been exempt at the time that Sioux Rivers became the owner. And so the taxes for 2016 and those that are due November of 2017 should be abated. This property went to tax sale because it wasn't at the time for 2016. We worked that out. I talked with Dennis Butler. Joshua and I worked on this with Patty as well with Sioux Rivers. They're gonna pay the interest because again, the property was bought. We will refund the money, but we will recoup it over time, and Dennis can better explain that for me. So we're not out of the funds. We're basically just giving money back that we received. And again, Sioux Rivers is paying the interest on it. So it's something that should have happened. It didn't. We're correcting it wrong. And moving forward, there shouldn't be a problem.
Do we know how much approximately the interest is?
Yes. It's $3,500 and some change.
Eighty-nine, thirty-five, eighty-nine.
Thirty-five, eighty-nine. And I have the check here, so Sioux Rivers has already provided the check. Should be a fairly simple process, but again, it's just something that needs to take place.
I will move approval. Second. Motion by DeWitt, second by Potabon. Any further questions? Would anybody like a more clear explanation from Mr. Butler, not that Mr. Jennings can't?
I think we'll need a separate motion for the 16 assessment year and the 17 assessment year.
Then can we make my motion for the...
They're two different. There's an A and B.
Right.
Yeah, sorry.
Well, mine's for A then?
Yep.
Okay.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Is there any other taxing bodies that's going to have to be petitioned along these lines, the city of Sioux City? Are we abating only the county portion of the taxes?
We're abating the whole tax. Actually, it's picked up at tax sale, so we have to refund the gentleman the tax dollars he paid on approximately $16,000. Instead of the county writing a check, which then will be covering all the other taxing bodies. We worked with the treasurer there. He's gonna write a check back to the individual. And then we'll just short the portion out in November, so we all get equal, our shares of refunds back to cover the cost. So if we wrote it off, are we covering all the other taxing bodies? If we wrote out general basic. So the best way is, and we talked to the treasurer about this, we'll short the portion in November for Taxing District 87. And then they'll portion it out and everybody takes loss equally to pay back, to cover the check the treasurer's gonna write.
Okay, but this, so the answer's no.
We don't have to notify anybody.
Okay. And in the future, what does one have to do to avoid a situation like this in the future? When we take over a property, there's, I assume there's some forms that we just need to be diligent about filling out?
Yeah, and that's all it is. It's just, it's just something that needs to be on the to-do list. Because it's governmental property, it should be automatic. I don't know how it gets handled, but I think this is gonna be a good learning experience that any property that's acquired from now on, that's one of the things that we need to look at.
Makes sense. That way we can avoid paying the interest in the future. Thank you.
Anybody? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item B, approval of tax abatement for Crisis Stabilization Center, 4038 Division, parcel ending in 001 for 2017 assessment year.
Move it.
Motion by Potabon, second by DeWitt. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
And again, the 2017 haven't come due because we're doing this action tonight. They would have come due November 15th, but this is to take care of that issue altogether, so.
Cleans it up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Also, we have to do the 18, that'll be next year. Right. Because we're covering 17 this year for taxes due now. And when taxes become a lien on the property, it'll be abated again, so county attorney will be back next year to do the same thing for the 18 assessment. And that's all done, cleared.
Yeah, but I'm not sure it's gonna be the county attorney. It'll probably be Sioux Rivers. It'll probably be Sioux Rivers.
It's on somebody's to-do list.
All right. Item eight, emergency services. Approve and authorize the chairperson to sign the medical examiner's transport agreement with the Sioux City Fire Department.
Woodbury County signed a contract on 7/1 of 18 with Siouxland Paramedics to do this workforce for $1,000 a month on a 12-month contract with a 30-day-out clause. On 8/30 of this year, Siouxland Paramedics notified us that they wanted to get out of this contract, and the contract allowed for that with a 30-day notice. We have the responsibility of taking medical examiner cases from the scene to the medical examiner's office at St. Luke's. The county attorneys, the sheriff's department, the chairperson of the board, board staff have all been involved in this process. We've come up with a new agreement with Sioux City Fire to do the cases within the city limits at $350 per case. Siouxland Paramedics is still offering to help us in the county without a contract, at the same fee that Sioux City Fire is getting. And we've also talked to the voluntary ambulance services out there, so in the event that Siouxland Paramedics is not able to do it, would they be interested in doing it for the same fee? And so far, we've not got any pushback from them. It's a matter of, we got a lot of resources tied up if we're sitting around waiting for transport. We just have an awful lot of resources sitting there waiting. Siouxland's business model just no longer provides that they can always have a rig available. They went from seven units down to two with the downsizing of their company. Questions? I should have added, the medical examiner's office has been involved in these discussions as well, so.
Who has?
The medical examiner's office.
Oh. Any questions for Gary on this? Kind of a long thought deal, Mr. Taylor.
Has our county attorney's office reviewed this agreement, or this is copacetic with past agreements?
And the city attorney's office have both reviewed disagreement. I think PJ actually, you worked on it yourself, didn't you?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
It will increase our annual costs doing this in the middle of about a year, and Denny's very well aware of it. He's been involved in the conversations. But the contract with Siouxland will be non-existent after today.
I'll move it.
Motion by Potabon, second by DeWitt. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay.
I think this goes on the city council's agenda next Monday for ratification by the city councils.
Thank you. Passes five to zero. Item nine, secondary roads. A, approval to set the first public hearing for a rewrite of the compression brake use ordinance for November 27, 2018 at 4:45 p.m. Mr. Nara?
Yes, we would like to set a public hearing for the compression brake ordinance. We've had a number of requests. Currently, we have ordinance in place on the fringes of the town of Mowville and Sloan. Lawton has come with similar requests. We have some other residential areas that border along Sergeant Bluff and Sioux City that would also like to see the ordinance put into place as well. So altogether, we have seven locations, including the two that are already approved. And I would offer to the board for the first hearing for the new ordinance on November 27 at 4:45 p.m.
I'll move to set the first public hearing for the rewrite of the compression brake use for November 27 at 4:45 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Ung. Chair? Yes, sir.
What's the sense? Just to make somebody feel better?
Yeah.
I mean, I remember when the city put them up, and there's never been a citation written for them.
Yeah, you know, I see patrol sitting at Mowville all the time. And we hear them coming through our windows, but they've never been posted. Now, that's one of the things that we're looking at with this one is that DOT, wherever we have a location that's along a department transportation highway, they will put the signs up.
Oh, they'll put them up for you?
Yes, and that would be at no cost to us. For the one on County Road D-38 and K-49, those would be up to the county to put up at a cost of about $800 per installation.
I remember when these ordinances became real popular in the 80s, and they were utterly worthless because they'd never get enforced.
Right, and part of the issue for not enforcing the one in Mowville, I would have to believe, is the fact that we do not have signs in place. So unless you warn the trucking industry that it's in place...
Short of enforcement, does it mitigate some, but just by having signage, so that it doesn't have to necessarily be a matter of law enforcement compliance?
We'll find out as months go by. And I mean, we're right on the edge of one of the, one of the locations where it's a problem. I regularly hear that rattling our windows, so.
If I'm not mistaken, they still have a sign at every entrance to Sioux City, isn't it?
Could be. I haven't really paid that close attention.
They've been there a long time.
Yeah.
See, we have a motion...
It has been prompted by multiple...
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It's just...
We do have a motion and a second, ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero. Item B, consider approval of contract and bond for project number 133.
I have nothing to offer the board as far as backup on this, other than being able to mention the price. This is all part of the new paperless world we are going to. Rocky is now approved for electronic signatures, and we'll have to get together one morning this week, whenever it works for you, to meet at Karen's computer and sign onto the system electronically. Brave new world we're entering. I recommend approval of the contract and bond for project number Perrin 133 with Dixon Construction for $567,393.30.
Move it.
Motion by Radig, second by DeWitt. Further questions for Mr. Nara or for the board members? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Building Services. Approval of contract with Global Engineering and Construction, Inc. for the Dorothy Pico Nature Center HVAC and Roof Improvement Project.
Kenny Schmitz, Building Services Director. We received bids for the Dorothy Pico Nature Center HVAC and Roof Improvement Project. Bids were from Global Engineering at $648,900. Nelson Commercial Construction, $667,200. And L&amp;L Builders at $678,160. Lowest bid from Global Engineering came in approximately $73,500 below our original construction estimates. Those numbers I gave you were for the base bid. There was an alternate bid, alternate number one was for control systems. That portion of the contract or the bid and the contract provided for an alternative control system so that we could remain compliant with Iowa bid laws. I do not recommend that we accept alternate number one. Alternate number one with Global Engineering is a deduct of $5,450. Again, I do not recommend we accept that alternate one. I recommend we deny it. And we remain with the control systems that we currently have. Now, what this means is currently, in the past year or so, the county has changed all our control systems and our front-end computer systems in all of our buildings to Allerton controls. What accepting alternate number one would do is, out at Dorothy Pico, is would not allow us to install Allerton controls. We would be installing a separate control system, which would be called Distech Controls, which is another company. They're based out of Sioux Falls. And if we did accept that alternate, we would then have to maintain two control systems. We'd have to maintain two vendors. We'd have to have training on two separate systems. And if we did accept Distech Controls in the future, we would have to pay all travel expenses on any work that we called them to come in complete on-site. So I'm recommending that we do not accept alternate one. Further asking for a 5% project contingency fee. The project contingency fee would be utilized for any unknowns that we may run into in the project. Also, asking to cover expense, moving expenses of the offices. All the office furniture has to be removed, taken out of the offices, then moved back in. Expecting that we may have some associated painting costs and things like that. Conservation is going to be replacing the carpet in those offices while we are doing this project. Approximately, I think around $10,000. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah.
And so they are going to be doing that. So I'm requesting a total of $723,595 and to approve the contract with Global Engineering and Construction.
I've never really seen any government give a contingency fee for the moving and all that in a project like this.
And the reason I'm, we do have a reason for that, and good point. Thanks for the question, Keith. Dan and I originally talked about building services, people completing this move. Since it's, I don't have the number, Dan, but I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say about seven or eight offices in a big file room. It's a lot of furniture. It's really more than I could, my staff can handle. And I don't feel comfortable with them moving this amount of furniture. I'm afraid we'll get some injuries. So I'd rather leave it to a professional moving company to do that. In that way, we're not delaying the project. Things are getting moved as they need to be moved in a timely manner, and we're ensuring that we don't injure any of our staff.
So was that not, that was not in the bid specs?
It was not in the bid specs and for a reason. We didn't want to add on additional costs that the construction project bidder would just add additional costs and then mark it up further. In other words, when doing their bids, one of the construction people that were providing a bid would just go out to a moving company and say, "Hey, give me a figure X for moving this furniture in these eight offices in this file room." And they would give him a number of, let's say, let's $10,000 or whatever it would be. They would, the bidder, or the person, the company submitting the bid would just mark that up, probably a 20% is standard. And so we were trying to eliminate that further cost.
So could we not just bid out the moving of that at the time being, or do you already have estimates for companies that you plan to work with?
Dan, I believe conservation is getting those quotes.
We have had a company come in to look at the offices, and there's things that we have, my staff has offered to do to cut costs and it's gonna reduce the amount of expenses from the moving company. I have not gotten that quote back yet. But they looked at it and they said, "This is a big job." And with all the lateral file cabinets, map file cabinets, if you've been in our offices. So we're gonna be looking at doing file drawers and boxing up everything we can and moving everything we can. It's just the big stuff and the desks and all the returns and things that we're worried about, so.
Is there a reason some of that can't just be covered?
They've got it, when they're doing the overhead, they don't want stuff in there. They're tearing the whole ceiling down, so there'd be no grid there, and they want to be able to work, and they bid that.
With an empty room?
An empty room.
And you're also replacing carpet.
And we're replacing carpet, yeah. Because that's 24 years old. And we do have some carpet on hand that's gonna go in the resource room, but they're gonna have to tear out carpet, condition the floors, and we're gonna go with the squares, so if we do have a bad spot...
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And I would imagine that the distance from building services to out there on short notice, if something had to be moved or moved again or whatever, wouldn't be conducive to economy of time either?
Yeah, it would not.
So if we give you like $32,000 for it and the moving of stuff comes in at $10,000, what are we gonna do then? Just not spend it?
Not spend it, correct.
Okay.
That's what a contingency fee is?
I don't want to find out about a bunch of new TVs and stuff out there that...
Sure.
I just, I've seen it happen.
Well, I can guarantee you it's not gonna happen on my watch.
Okay.
We're in front of you for moving expenses and some paint. We've got a painting contractor that's looking at everything too, and so that's what you'll see.
How many rooms are getting painted? About 11, you said?
The eight offices, the hallway and bathrooms and...
File room.
File room. And I have two competitive quotes on that already. Just got those today.
Good, thank you.
So what was the number you're looking for again, Ken?
The total project amount we're looking for not to exceed is $723,595. That does include $42,250 that was previously approved for architectural engineering fees.
Kenny, is this contingency written into the contract? I'm gathering that it's not.
It is not, no.
Right. As far as what's on the agenda today, the only thing that's on the agenda is the contract. So I think you'll need to come back.
Why don't we just move the contract, and then when these things come in, then we approve those?
I don't have a problem with that, as long as it doesn't delay anything that we're trying to do.
So Joshua, are you saying because it's not notified on the front end of the agenda item? I mean, it's in the backup, but because it's not noticed here as far as contingency?
Right, the official agenda is the two-page document, not the backup material.
It's noted in the, in the action.
Right, but the backup materials aren't part of the agenda under Iowa code.
Okay.
So you just want to get those bids, Kenny, and then come back?
Sure.
Present them to the board, spend all those costs, argue?
And we'll just have that on the agenda for next meeting, the contingency?
And they wouldn't be change orders because they're not part of the contract. They would just be...
Correct.
Miscellaneous project or something.
Yes.
So the county attorney's office reviewed the contract, but not the agenda item, essentially?
We reviewed the contract prior to when the bid specs went out. I think it's one that we've used before on other projects. But I wasn't asked to review this agenda item or the contract in its final form.
I guess normally, we don't come to Joshua and PJ and ask them to review the agenda item, but, or have not previously done that.
Yeah.
The only other thought I have while we're standing and talking, or I'm, you're sitting, I'm standing, we're talking about this, but is if I won't have any numbers for any other items that we may run into while we're doing this project. And that is what I was basing the percentage off of. I don't expect that whatever Dan comes for painting and for moving expenses to be anywhere close to the 5% contingency I'm asking for. So I'm asking for money that I don't know what it may be utilized for.
When are you starting all this?
Towards the end of December, probably.
Okay, so if you come back next week and we improve the contingency, you have those dollars, and as long as you're keeping within the, going out for a couple of competitive bids, you should be good, right? Am I following you correctly?
I should be good if Josh was okay with that. I mean, I'll have hard numbers for quotes on painting and moving, but I won't have anything for the rest of the contingency where we may run into some problems during the project.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it's, I think it's just the fact that the contingency isn't noted on the agenda upfront for us to approve, not necessarily that we don't have hard numbers. Would that, am I understanding right, Joshua?
Yeah, the only issue I'm having with voting on it tonight is that it's not listed on the agenda separately. or referenced in the agenda item at all.
Well, it wouldn't be technically a change order, it'd just be a separate project, essentially.
Yeah, so let's just get on the agenda next week and go...
Bring the contingency thing forward next week.
Do we have a motion yet, Mr. Chairman?
We have not.
I'd like to move to approve the contract with Global Engineering in the amount of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred, contingent upon proof of contractors, insurance, certificate, and bond.
Second?
Motion by Taylor, second by Reddick. For that long motion. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Pass five to zero. Item B, Prairie Hills Training Center Floor Scrubbing Equipment.
The recently opened Prairie Hills Training Center is in need of some equipment to clean their floors out there. The agenda item before you is for a floor scrubber, especially needed in areas of high traffic, like the classrooms and the indoor dog training area for sanitary reasons. There is an invoice attached for TNT sales in the amount of five thousand, nine hundred dollars.
I got some questions on this one here, too. This is kind of a capital expense, mid-budget year. Is there a reason we can't use mops until it's time to throw it in the CIP budget?
Reason to use what? I'm sorry, Keith.
Like a mop bucket and water, scrub brush?
Yeah, I mean, the areas are pretty large, so it would be pretty, it would be labor-intensive.
This machine will do the entire building, no matter the floor surface, correct?
Yes.
I walked out there, and it was locked up. There's nobody, I don't know that anyone was out there the day I was out there, but I looked through, kinda gauged the size. I mean, a lot of it's got some narrow areas, a lot of tables and chairs and things. They're gonna have to move to use a floor scrubber. You know, I've cleaned plenty of floors and buildings, and, you know. It looks like it's also like bifurcated, like there's almost like two separate portions of the building. So is there like ease of use in that scenario? I mean, that seems like a relatively large floor scrubber for, to me, a small building.
It is. I'm not sure that a piece of equipment this size is absolutely necessary. I'm certain that they do need a piece of equipment to do this with. But that said, I didn't, I'm not, I brought the agenda item forward, but I did not, I am not the person that made the purchase or brought the equipment on site for the sheriff's office to review.
Because I know in home furniture, we have a floor scrubber there, but it's for basically what we call the racetrack, which is the aisles that loop around upstairs and downstairs and the skywalk.
Sure.
Both of these areas are huge, long, open areas that you need to be able to mop, but have dry immediately because you don't want a tripping hazard.
Right.
So they use a floor scrubber. But other areas of the store, they use a mop. And, you know, I've managed McDonald's and five or six other fast food places in my lifetime, and, you know, most of those facilities are at least half the size of that, and we had to scrub brush and mop every night, you know, and some places use power washers and...
Right. I guess the other, the other side of that coin is that as far as the labor goes, there's no, there's no assignment on floor cleaning, if you'd like to call it that, out at that Prairie Hills Training Facility.
Sure.
It's something that the sheriff's department has been doing on their own. I think Don Groves is probably the person, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Rocky.
What would your opinion be, Kenny, on doing it with the floor scrubber and, and as opposed to doing it with, mopping it by hand and humidity issues? Doesn't the floor scrubber vacuum itself back up and...
It does, good point. Very good point. It would create humidity issues. Again, given the size of that building, using a mop and bucket isn't practical, in my opinion.
I just think for the level of usage it's getting, the amount of foot traffic, I get that it's dirty out there. You've got gravel, you've got dirt.
You've got dogs.
And, yeah.
I will move approval of the floor scrubbing equipment.
Second?
And where would we, would we get the money from, Dennis?
I would suggest gaming revenues. We already have allocated thirty-one thousand, four hundred and four for furniture tables, furniture they need in there.
Okay.
Those would be addition to it. That would still leave us about a hundred and forty thousand left, unallocated gaming revenues.
Any further questions on the item?
Yes. How often would this be used after the initial cleaning?
Oh, I estimate that they would probably, depending on what they have going on...
Weather and...
You're probably gonna have to allocate somebody that cleans floors then, too, so you make sure it's done.
Yes.
I mean, I hate to say that, but
Probably.
You spend six grand on a floor scrubber, you better hope somebody's got that as their job description.
I'm gonna say probably a minimum of every, at least every two weeks, at least.
Because they're trying to have other groups come in for classes and all, too, and that would just require more cleaning, so...
Right.
And I don't, I do think it was good news. I think the sheriff reported that they had a thousand-dollar rental advancement to the county, so that's, that's good. Incidental to the conversation, sorry, but...
And again, you know, there's another item that kind of adds to the difficulty of the cleanliness out there currently, and it's probably, it's not really any of, anyone's fault, but we don't have any sidewalks or a parking lot or things like that out there, so we're going from basically glass, grass, or dirt right into the facility, which isn't the best scenario, but it's the one that we have currently.
But the sheriff's office has a training center.
They do.
So. Further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Passed this four to one. Mr. Reddick opposed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. Item eleven. Board of Supervisors' Approval of Resolution to Accept Lyon County to Sioux Rivers Mental Health Region.
This is something I said I'd put on the agenda last week, but I didn't get the resolution until late Friday, so I got it here now. Notice I didn't put a recommendation. You can vote how you wish. I think in good faith, though. I mean, it's already, it's technically passed with the other two counties voting for it. I feel in the meeting, you know, we abstained since it's really their decision, but I'll vote for it here today.
Sure. I'd like to ask to consider whether voting affirmatively for this is in the interest of our county. We are no longer a member of Sioux Rivers as of July first, a member of Rolling Hills, and any abstention, my understanding, and our county attorney's office could correct me if I'm wrong, but would be taken as a yes vote. And I'm appreciative, actually, that you both abstained. I think that's something that we made overtures of before, and I think that's sort of the gentlemanly thing to do. But my concern is the, whether or not those three counties reconstitute a new region has implications for us as far as asset management. Wish them all the best, and I really mean that. And I actually think that there's opportunities where we can even collaborate in the future, potentially, which their last Rolling Hills meeting alluded to. You know, in something like a program where maybe there are certain Sioux or Plymouth clients that are using some shared services and paying a percentage. I think there's all sorts of opportunities. So I don't want it interpreted any other way, other than I think it may be in our best interest to not vote affirmatively. It'll be immaterial, as both of those counties are going to, or already have voted to bring Lyon in. That's my personal opinion. Again, wishing them nothing but the best in what they do.
I guess the only concern I had, of course, and I brought it up in that Sioux Rivers meeting, was that we basically had the vote the day after Lyon voted to join. So technically, legally, we couldn't have had the required four days' notice to post in a Sioux Rivers meeting that they were gonna have that on the agenda, and they just put that under... That was my main concern. Again, still voting on it here, but I don't know. That's, that's why it's up here for discussion. I didn't put a recommendation.
Of course, the abstention, I believe, was in part because we didn't have a Joshua Widman there at the board meeting to say if it's not noticed on the agenda, we shouldn't vote on it. But the timeliness issue from there and served them, obviously. Mr. Chair, would, I don't know if those from Siouxland Mental Health would like to speak?
Maybe not on this item, but something later, I guess.
Okay.
I guess I will say something. You know, and this was, it came up, Sheila Martin, CEO of Siouxland Mental Health. When this did come up on the, this wasn't even on the agenda at the last Sioux Rivers meeting. This was under regional transitioning, so this wasn't an agenda item, so individuals such as myself did not know, and I think a lot of other individuals did not know. There was very little discussion on the matter. So, and it was Woodbury County abstained, and then it was any questions?
Thank you. Since you're on that board, would you, do you have any other further comment?
No, I'm generally uncomfortable with how it was pushed through. That's all I'll say.
When we left Sioux, or when we gave intention to leave Sioux Rivers, wasn't part of the agreement that we wouldn't stand in the way to get another county in, if so, if it came up?
That was the overture that was made, never agreed to, or it was never, right.
I remember that coming up in discussions somewhere.
And I think that goes to the point of, we aren't blocking, you know, certainly by this, this vote, but I would not want someone to come back later and say, well, you voted for this and add this implication for the assets that I'm sure will certainly be a discussion in the future.
What county interests are you referring to?
The one would be the Crisis and Stabilization Center. So if they were to reconstitute as a new region, that's different than the continuation, and I just, again, wish them nothing but the best, but don't believe it's in the interest of Woodbury County to vote for this.
Questions or comments? Anything further?
I can agree with that statement that, you know, that's not a, not the best interest necessarily financially in that regards, but that when it comes to direct, you know, financial cause, or what do you call it? How was it worded in the agenda? Financial impact, direct financial impact, sorry. We're not expending funds to necessarily buy that from them or pay out their share of the Crisis and Stabilization Center, or are we gonna expend funds to build one or to develop our own? It's kinda hard to put any kind of numbers or financial impact towards our county. So that's why there's none really to Woodbury County in my backup material, but, yeah, there's... If a Sioux Rivers region still exists, they get the Crisis and Stabilization Centers, I read it legally.
Supervisor Taylor and DeWitt, how many times did you attend Rolling Hills meetings when we were petitioning to join? More than once?
Several, right, and more than once, definitely.
I just don't recall a Lyon County representative or even a statement being read.
Well, and they're not part of Rolling Hills, so...
No, no, I know, but to, in front of Sioux Rivers.
Oh, okay.
For me to answer your question, I was at least two, maybe three, but I, but two for sure.
Did that help? The process?
To get into your understanding of the process?
I see what you're saying, that they're, yeah, that you'd never heard them petitioning or discussing with any of you is... Yeah, it absolutely helped. I mean, I can't imagine trying to join without having some of those conversations. I assume that they've been had. Just maybe not with all of you.
Does anybody see the need for a roll call vote on this?
We don't even have a motion yet. Just to get it going, I will move the approval of the resolution for Lyon County to enter Sioux Rivers Mental Health Region.
I'll second it.
Motion by Potabom, second by Reddick. Does anybody feel the need for a roll call vote?
Yeah. Just as well.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Potabom?
Aye.
Reddick?
Aye. Might regret that.
Taylor?
No.
Um?
Aye.
DeWitt?
Nay.
The vote is two, four, three against. Is there anything further we need to discuss?
We put it on the agenda, and it did not pass, so...
Okay. Reports on committee meetings.
Sure.
We had a Rolling Hills meeting, the regional meeting, and very, very appreciative of the providers that came. As you know, they were asked by the Governance Board, representing those seven counties, to have non-core, core-plus proposals. The Sioux City Schools, Siouxland Mental Health, the Sanford Center, Ark, and Chesler Hall. Each one did a very fine job of laying out their funding needs, their application. Just to note, there was duplication in that the school district was applying for, and you've seen it in the headline, the seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, and Siouxland Mental Health, and the Sanford Center, each also gave their application. So those were overlap, but given the compressed timeframe, it was understandable that, you know, all organizations said, we'll, we'll ask for this funding. I thought the supervisors there asked very good questions, and it was a very good process. It sounded like a timeline would be toward December. They do have another meeting, November twenty-first, in which they'll couple that with the Legislative Forum at eleven. The Howard Center in Sac City, addressing mental health and needs for long-term sustainable funding, children's mental health, and the MCOs. I didn't comment because I thought it was important for our providers to be able to make their cases and for our counterparts to be able to learn the services without me or Woodbury County inserting itself. I did say this one thing. We plan to cover our costs, live within our means, and to, so if there's any heartburn over our ability to do so, that's a commitment that I think I could make on behalf of our board. And they also let us know that they want to provide services as a region. So that which they do typically in one area or county, they, they like to try to do elsewhere. I won't belabor the point, but just one other thing I thought was encouraging to me is that for something like a program that has been utilized by Plymouth and Sioux, if there was a continuation of that, I don't think there's anything that prohibits us from maybe entering into a cooperative agreement with them on a cost-sharing basis. I saw some providers having some good discussions with staff. Those, to me, are encouraging signs and continue to be appreciative of the Governance Board and their CEO, who have come on several occasions this way and meeting us halfway.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Um? Mr. Potabom?
No.
Mr. Reddick?
Simco, we had a couple of meetings. Basically, some dates that were brought up, discussed. November seventh, four PM, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers at the Stony Creek Hotel, discussing the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen annual operating plan for the Missouri River. Obviously, that is something quite a few residents in this area have interest in. We also have on that same date, December seventh, which is also for Harbor Day. The Simco Tri-State Legislative Forum will be held from, from ten to noon. It's gonna be at Western Iowa Tech this year, and let's see, Room L four sixteen and seventeen. So those were the things we were working on. There's a big kind of discussion around housing. They're gonna bring up the South Dakota... They're going to bring up the South Dakota Governor's Housing Program, and in Nebraska, they've talked about land banks, and of course, here in Iowa, we, we all just realized we needed housing and haven't really discussed any, you know, incentives yet, other than, you know, come here and build because there's jobs for you, so. But that's, that's the discussion plan.
Sure.
Do you want to talk a little bit about LAC's DNR stuff, or do you want me to talk it? Did you give a brief?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, we had a conference call, Kenny Smith, Dennis Butler, Melissa Thomas, myself, Rocky DeWitt, with DNR field staff, Dan Rupert, do I have that name right? Who is our contracted vendor, who is helping us on the mitigation underneath the LAC. Benzine, that whole situation is highly technical, most of it over my head, I'm not going to lie. But as far as the implications to the board, our, we need to get some light at the end of the tunnel, and our funding, the funding in order to mitigate, sounds like it's drying up, for lack of a better term. Is that an accurate statement, gentlemen?
It's, the funding's been mitigating.
Yeah.
It's mitigated.
Right, there you go. I was waiting for when you were going to come up with a joke, so, the, and that was a joke, ladies and gentlemen, just so you know. There seems to be some light at the end of the tunnel, and so we're looking for what DNR is going to say that that is. When are we able to say, like, the situation's been fully mitigated and taken upon? So, that's kind of a high-level overview. Anything that I'm missing?
I think that's just about it. I think that's pretty much the gist of it. They, they are running out of funding, but we are getting near the end of the project in their eyes, and I think Jeremy gave a good general overview of what the meeting encompassed.
Well, in addition to some equipment that's full of sediment, too, I mean, there just, it just seems to be a never-ending mess kind of over there.
It is, and we've been mitigating for now longer than what, what they had actually projected in the, in the, before the initial startup, so.
This is what, fuel, oil, or gasoline from previous gas station or something?
Yep, benzine.
Dividend gas was there for a long time.
Yes.
Thanks, Kenny.
I was informed one day last month that my term has expired with the Sioux Land Economic Development Corporation. I think it was September, but is anybody interested in sitting on that in Maystead? Or should we wait? And they said it's fine for me to be there until after the first, when new assignments come out, or whatever. Is anybody else interested in sitting on that? It's on a Wednesday at noon, once a month.
How did that happen? Is it September to September for all the?
No, I think it, I'd have to go back and look at the email again, but I think it was a three-year term, or two-year term, for someone from our board to sit on it, and apparently it's, like I said, it expired September 30th.
It's free lunch on the eve.
Is there?
Yeah, so, I don't know.
Well, we, we've assigned different supervisors in the middle of those three-year terms, haven't we?
My health screening said I'm on the edge of this.
I've been on it since I've been on the board, and it doesn't matter, it's just.
Right, and we could just reappoint you for the rest of the year, if they needed that.
Yeah, they didn't seem to be opposed to having.
I'd be, I'd be in favor of that.
Naturally. Me taking food out of Keith's mouth.
He's got, he's got enough chips in that trunk.
Okay, that's the only thing I had. Any other reports on committee meetings? Citizen Concerns, round two.
Hello, Sheila Martin, CEO of Sioux Land Mental Health. During the citizen comment section of the Woodbury County Supervisors Meeting on October 30th, 2018, there were concerns regarding mental health funding to Sioux Land Mental Health Center. Statements were made that there was an email sent to Bev Zener, Shane Walter, and myself, and a copy of that email was provided to the supervisors during that meeting. It was specifically stated by this individual that she had received no response to her communication at all, good, bad, or indifferent, so whatever. I am here to state that I did respond to the email approximately 59 minutes later. Do you have any questions? The next thing I'd like to comment on is that there were also statements made about our intake process, and I, I just do want to state Sioux Land Mental Health Center is growing. We are, we serve over 5,000 patients and, and over 74,000 encounters, 74,000. That is a lot. And as far as our intake process, we have two individuals that part of their time, 50%, they are covering intake, because it's a high burnout position. We did have somebody in there full-time, they said, can't do it, it's too much, so we moved them back to 50%. So there is an individual covering intake and crisis appointments all day, every day at Sioux Land Mental Health, Monday through Friday. Because of the need, we had 115 new patients in 14 business days, that's averaging 8.2 patients walking in. We are changing our intake process. We are moving to two intake therapists full-time, Monday through Friday, full-time, and two other therapists who are going to be backup to help with all the overflow. Then on Monday afternoons, we will actually have three intake therapists, and then two therapists as backup, so five. So, in order for us to meet the need of our community. So I just want to talk a little bit about intake and, and what we are doing at Sioux Land Mental Health. The other thing, too, I, I do want to mention is peer support. Yes, Sioux Rivers did give us $40,000 to implement peer support services at Sioux Land Mental Health Center. I do just want to pass around the informational letter from Department of Human Services regarding our reimbursement rate for peer support services. You will see that we receive $12.50 per 15-minute increment to provide peer support services. That equals to $50 per hour. When you have an individual, let's say, for example, you're paying them $35,000, another $15,000 for benefits of $50,000, it's really hard to try to fully fund that position on that reimbursement rate. So, do you have any questions regarding peer support and our reimbursement rate?
I'd move to receive the information into the backup materials.
Second. Motion by Um, second by DeWitt to receive the material. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Kathy, I hope you don't mind, I did bring up your name at last week's meeting. I don't know if, okay, I.
I had a problem.
Because I, you know, and, and looking back on things, a cut probably isn't the correct term, so in their mind, a $670,000 cut is not accurate, because it was passed, it was never given, but it was rescinded. So, I guess it was a recension and not a cut, but either way, you were going to get $670,000.
Asking the people that I serve, it's a cut.
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's where, I guess, a little disagreement came, but.
Yeah, sure. Do you have any questions for me? Before I sit down?
I did want to say 202 encounters a day is impressive. That's a lot.
202.
Because you said 740,000?
74,000.
74,000 in a year.
Yep.
That's 202 a day.
Do you have those documents that I can attach to the board? Um.
You know, I think I turned mine in last week, so.
My name's Kathy Roberts. I work for Sioux Land Mental Health and the manager of Friendship House.
Thank you.
Supervisor Taylor, can you pass this to the House? So I'm here to clear up any inaccurate information and misunderstandings of financial cuts from Sioux Rivers that specifically impacted Friendship House. I'll also clarify and show how expectations were different from Friendship House than other programs. First, I'll address that $675,000, whether you want to cut, let it cut, or whatever, it's still $675,000. A committee met to discuss how money would be spent throughout the region for peer support expansion, and how that would look in each of the three counties. On April 25th of 2017, and you'll see this on page two, number 10, there's a little highlighted green there, a proposal was given, and a motion was approved. Simply the fact that we never received these funds and that our region is no longer willing to discuss this amount is clear that Friendship House was cut, reduced, whatever you want to call it, by $675,000. Next, I'd like to give you some information supporting how expectations were different for Friendship House than other programs receiving these funds. So on here, you can look at page four, some orange highlighting there. This is the proposal given by Plains Area for expansion of their drop-in center. This proposal was actually given prior to the April 25th, 2017 meeting. When the peer expansion, or peer support expansion committee met, the amounts changed from what was on that page. However, no other proposal was provided by Plains. As you notice, there's a line item named remodel cost. There is no discussion of any plans, specs, or if there would be any walls moved, et cetera. Funds were given to Plains in June of 2017. For the Friendship House project, we looked at a couple of different options, including adding on to our current location, but eventually discovered the best option was to purchase the old blood bank building, to remodel it to fit our needs, and we could do that within our budget. During this meeting here, last week, October 30th, during Citizens Concerned, it was stated that no explanation was given on how additional funds would be spent above just purchasing the blood bank building. However, you'll see in there that on October 24th of 2017, I emailed Shane Walters all of the information to be reviewed by the board prior to that October 30th Governance Board meeting. And then on October 30th of 2017, all the information was included in their board packet. The information included full marketing package for the building, along with drawings from an architect, for the upper and lower levels of the building, and it also included a comprehensive budget summary. So finally, I'd like to draw your attention to the Sioux Rivers Meeting notes, item number eight, it's highlighted in yellow, October 30th of 2017, and Supervisor Radig, I hope you don't mind, I use your words from last week. This is the meeting where the rug was pulled out from underneath our feet. There's two and a half pages of comments there that show that Friendship House was denied funds because Woodbury County at that point was discussing withdrawing from the region. There's comments in there that say, things have changed, the situation is different. Why would we invest in Woodbury County? So for someone to say that we weren't treated differently, I object to that.
And for the record, to be totally straight on this, the original motion I had made to give the funds for peer support was done to all three different organizations.
Correct.
So it shows here, motion by Keith Radig, second by Dennis Wright, to approve $675,000 to Sioux Land Mental Health Friendship House building, $40,000 for peer support staff at the Friendship House, $275,000 cost a Plains Area drop-in center with a five-year revision of the buildings. So we had to rescind the entire motion, and then they made a motion to give that money back to Plains Area, but did not give a motion to give anything back, well, actually, other than architect fees that were already expended. That was it.
And, not that it matters a whole lot, but their original proposal was to purchase their building and expand their program right where they sat. They did purchase their building and became landlords so that they could have income, and they've used that money to purchase a new building, which, by the way, is absolutely beautiful, and they're able to provide an amazing service for their folks. But they purchased a building and moved walls and did all kinds of things without any kind of plans that were taken to the Governance Board.
And that's where, when I brought it up last week, the other providers were treated very differently from Sioux Land Mental Health. Mental Health, excuse me. I'd also point out, too, the minutes had stated something along the lines of, well, if they stay in our region, then we'll give that funding back.
Absolutely.
And essentially, it was almost like trying to blackmail us to stay into a region where our providers were expected to be treated differently.
There were some things that were left out of those notes, and I don't blame Julie for not typing them, I won't repeat them in public, so.
Oh, yes, yes.
There were some things that were said by supervisors in Plymouth and Sioux Counties that were colorful. Say that. Do you have any questions about any of that? That's all I got.
Do we need a motion to receive these?
I would think so.
I'll make a motion to receive these materials. If anyone's interested in the, in the, in the.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt to receive documents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Passes five to zero. Thank you. Any other citizen concerns? Hearing none, board concerns. I will start. Did you guys get the same thing, ISAC District Three? Anybody in your mail slot? Would anybody, would we need to have, would anybody be interested in going so that we can therefore post notice that it would be a? Has anybody been to these before?
Yeah, I think so. I won't be available that date.
Would it be wasted? Huh?
I don't play my own game.
You see it, Marty? Did you get one, Keith?
I did, but I don't know that I'll be there yet.
Okay, well, then we'll probably not be needing that. City of Sioux City, this, the, the new, is it the Gilchrist Learning Center? Will we be needing a, will anybody be attending that?
I probably will.
I'll be in Des Moines that day, I won't be available.
Will they post a minute?
November 14th, 5 to 7:00 PM.
Bring you on lunch.
Okay. And that's all I have. Sure.
Two, two quick things. Appreciative of the Taxpayers Research Conference, because I know Woodbury County's moved to Rolling Hills, I thought that was a big, good thing. And then the last one, I just thought it's worth mentioning, not to speak prior to anything, but the North Ogden Mayor, was an Army National Guard, been at war for over 17 years, Brent Taylor, no relation, but he was killed in the line of duty, seven kids early in his community, and I thought it was very moving that his last message was to go out and vote, the very last thing that he put out, and then, of course, sacrifice his life, so I thought that was a point in the, appreciative of the Auditor's Office for helping ensure that all along here as well, and thankful, so.
North Ogden, you said?
One of the people he was training.
And how are things going in the Auditor's Office?
A few people were trying to get in to vote today, huh? Did you see the list at the security station?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm well acquainted with that list, Marty.
I'm talking about the guys that really work up there, they showed it.
Yeah, well, like you'd know anything about that, but regardless. Any other board concerns? We are adjourned. One of those, that last one, looked like it had a signature on it. One of those, that last one, looked like it had a signature on it.